With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Yulenski.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mary McVettrick.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, May 6, 2019, a regular board meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Alright, are there any corrections, discussions? I would just like to add that this, this set of minutes is absolutely stellar. This was an extremely difficult meeting to write about. We had tons of information and presentations and facts and figures and people interrupting each other. And I know it took Mary a long, long time to pull it together, so I thank you. You really did a great job on this.
Yeah, excellent job. I've done minutes before.
Oh, I can't even do minutes. I just forget to write. I just listen. Alright, if there are some...
Was that the May 6th minute?
Oh, did I skip to May 6?
You said May 6.
Yeah.
Amy, you weren't here. You came from home.
Can she?
Oh, no.
No, I'm sure she wasn't.
Right.
Yeah, she came late.
She... Yeah, she came late. Yeah, so she was...
Oh, did the motion...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she did come late. You're right. But you can... That's alright.
I roll call. She was not here. She didn't arrive.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
But you're fine.
God, I thought it was here.
Well, it's not listed.
I'm really losing it because I swore I was here.
Me too then.
It sounded all good when I read it.
Sounded familiar, right?
I'm so sorry.
We're just teasing. Alright, if there are no corrections. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. That's fine. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community.
Can we approve the May 28?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the 28. Sorry about that. So the special meeting, the May 28. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion on these?
Yep.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Now, members of the community, as we have no one here tonight. A little suspense with that. Report from the codes enforcement officer.
Um, you have my report. There's not much of anything new. Little bit of work with the zoning board. We did some training. Uh, issued a few building permits and again, it's that time of year. Trash and grass. So, working on that.
And any progress on the grass, Mike?
Yeah, no, please go ahead.
There's a couple of them I got in court. Just waiting for court to do whatever it's gonna do. And there's some more that's gonna be going. I mean, I can only get to them when I get to them. So, working on the one up by you.
Okay, that has literally gone to seed just like Timothy.
Yeah, I was up there. I saw it. I talked to him last week and he's supposed to have it all cut over the weekend. Well, that didn't happen. So, they went in here and he's the next one to go. There's a few other ones in the village. I've got a list there of different places, so.
Couple people did mow.
Yeah.
They responded.
Yeah.
So that was good. Too, too good, I know.
It's almost like we need to send letters to these people on the 15th of April. Like reminder, you need to mow in May. To mow. A couple times a week. I don't know what to do. It's the same ones every year.
I think we just have to...
And most of them that I'm aware of won't do a thing until they start getting pressured. And then they'll finally do something.
Well, now, once I have the pictures and their date stamped and they go to court, they can cut it if they want, but it's up to the court, you know? In the past, a lot of them got dismissed. I'm curious to see what's gonna happen this round. Because one of them, it's the second offense since October, so we'll see what's gonna happen there.
Well, please keep pushing and pressuring because it's ridiculous. I can see not mowing often enough is one thing, but just plain not mowing at all.
Yeah, there were some, they just started mowing it there this past week. It hadn't been touched at all. And, you know, what the hell are you waiting for?
I know. I think they've probably mowed it at least a half dozen times without more.
Every week, yeah. And that's about it. I mean...
I see the South Street properties have done some attempt at cleaning up.
Well, one's going to court, the other one got a notice of violation. We had a little discussion there last week. It was short.
It looks like they picked a few things up.
Well, you know, I'm done playing around with them. Every week I gotta go up there and go through the same thing. You know?
Well, we support them, like just...
No, I know. It's just...
Do whatever you gotta do.
I'm fed up with it. I'm trying to reason with them, give them a chance, but it's not working. Obviously, they don't get it. So, we'll go the route of the court. If they have money, they give to the court, you know, so be it.
Any other questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Here's my report. The month of May was busy in the village of Champlain. The Elm Street Bridge was cleaned and repainted. The blower project at the wastewater treatment plant was completed. Remediation of the contamination in front of the office has progressed. Streets have been cleaned, ditches dug, trees planted, and docks installed, among many other things. I thank Juanita, Mary, Mike, Woody, Robert, Jimmy, Mike and Mike for their dedication to keeping this village running smoothly. They are the run and the brains of this operation. A number of events and activities will take place this summer. Check the website or the Facebook page for the schedule of concerts, longboat rowing, children's activities, farmer's market, fun runs, among others. There's still time to plant some vegetables or flowers in the community garden. I think we've got three spots left. Uh, it has come to my attention that messages of hate and racism have been heard and seen on the playground, on the streets, and on village property. This is not who we are, and this is not what we stand for. Everyone has the right to be treated fairly regardless of who they love, the color of their skin, or where they worship. A group of residents will be gathering soon to discuss this issue. I welcome others' input. Call me to offer your suggestions. This is an opportunity to create a welcoming community where all voices are heard. In the words of Dwight D. Eisenhower, "This world of ours must avoid becoming a community of dreadful fear and hate and be instead a proud confederation of mutual trust and respect." I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Reports from the trustees. Amy?
So, I filled out an RFA. It wasn't a grant, to get assistance for a study for downtown. Kind of the continuation with the whole park piece. With the focus being on driving businesses into the village and what we can do to get them there. Based off of our strong outdoor activities that we already have of all the multiple different grants of the things that we've added down in the village. So, we'll see. That's gonna be announced in July, so we'll hear on that. We were approved for the concerts in the park, so we're getting an additional... Two? Two concerts.
Oh, well, it actually is one, but we're getting a really good concert.
Okay, so I wrote it as two, so do we need to get permission from them for it to be one with a pricier price?
I don't know, but I already signed the contract, so...
Okay.
We do have three other concerts in addition to that one.
Okay.
So, I think we can figure that out.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll just, I'll just write a letter to them because they're very particular that you do and we have to show receipts for what we say in, in purchase with that. They're very stringent.
We can, we can work that out.
Right. Um, and the paint was ordered for the stencils. And I have some options for stencils I'd like to discuss with you for downtown. So, as you know, the original people we were going to buy from, they told me they'd give me 25% off, blah, 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 and then they changed the story. So I told them, you know, like Amy does, no, thank you. We won't be doing business with you. So, I found a couple other places and it looks like Peaceful Playgrounds has the best prices for what they offer. I did request a discount and they did say they'd have it answered by tomorrow for me, but unfortunately it wasn't by today, but... So these are options that they have available. So they have a really good price on the whole United States of America, which I thought just would be so colorful and great to put it out there. It's 27 feet. It's big. So it'd be kind of nice. It's just whereabouts would we be putting that? The other thing, they also had a world one if we wanted to be more educational for the kids and that was the same size equal. Of course, a hopscotch one, which gotta have, and then an outline of a half basketball court so that people actually have the line and the markings to go from. I would like more options, but the Peaceful Playground did not have more individualized. They had this really nice one that I thought would be amazing and I'll have to table that for next year grant money that we could use on our trail. So it has a whole variety of different things. So between an alphabet, combined hopscotch, just like an agility thing as you're going down the trail for kids, more so for the kids to be involved as they're forced to walk with mom and dad on the trails, right? Something kind of fun for them to do. And that, it's pricey. It's like $2,000, but it's amazing. And it would just be so wickedly awesome to have.
Does that have to go on asphalt or...?
Asphalt or cement or so.
The paved section.
The paved section. Yes, obviously you can't go on a stone. That would be a nightmare. So, we'll put that in for, you know, another grant for that. So, just wanted to get your thoughts as to whether you'd like to see a world map, a United States map, where you think we could put it, the hopscotch piece, et cetera, et cetera. So, the other one that they had, but that was $1,400, which I thought would be great to go around the street and it was meant specifically for like a U shape like we have, you know, going around metal there. And again, it's just an agility thing to do along the edge, which I thought that would be really kind of cool, but that's $1,400. And we only have another 620-some dollars to spend.
Okay, so...
We have, we have, actually, we have an account. That's a playground account. So why can't we use some of that money?
So I was thinking the same thing, so I was going to ask that. Depending on what you like, the more the merrier. But obviously, we go with that big thing. We're gonna need more than the paint I got.
I do have some questions, though. On the revitalization plan, that paved area is taken out.
Right.
Maybe half of it might taken out and we have, we still have half for a basketball court and we can use the striping, like you said. Does the court, the half court and the map fit in our space?
Yes.
Okay.
The space we have now?
And what's the life on these stencils?
Well, there's no life.
Well, I mean, in terms of scraping and, well, I know, but I'm saying the paint and the...
Yeah, because... So this is the paint that they use on the roads, you know, for striping. So it's supposed to last a lot longer than any other options that they had available. But it will be need to be reapplied. The stencils are reusable, which is what I wanted so that then you could redo and freshen up, change colors, you know? So I don't know, to be honest. You know, she was singing three to five years if you're running a snowplow over it and depending on how much traffic. But for what we're doing, it's not gonna be that unless I do the one along the road. Piece. But, like you said, if we're gonna do the park over, when and if...
I can't see that happening for at least three years because it's major funding. I'm not sure where that's coming from. So, we certainly have the space right now to do it.
World, US?
Those details.
Or, how much money do we have in that account? The world, it's just each, each, all the continents, which is cool. And it has the countries outlined in the continents, which is... And then the United States one is obviously each individual state, different colors.
There's 3,800 in that count.
So we could do... I can see what kind of discount they'll give us. If we add in that other one and how long it is so I can measure out how far exactly that we have it paved in our sections. Or we could do it the sidewalk between the library and the path, which would be really nice.
That would be nice.
Connecting the two things together.
That's a great idea.
What would you do on the sidewalk? Wouldn't be that big, but obviously...
The agility one, you know? The, it's, you know, it's got the ladder, it's got the alphabet thing, it's got a counting thing. It's just all hands-on activity.
So that would go across the...
I can send pictures.
Sidewalk across the bridge, you mean?
No, I would do it like from the library to the beginning of the activity trail.
So it's actually on the trail. It's on the really on the trail.
So going up that way? I was thinking this direction here. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
And the only other place I'd recommend, maybe considering putting something smaller if we can, would be Cedar Street. Just because there, there are so many young children down there and they don't really have a green space
Yeah.
around them, but that would be an activity for them.
We could even do down there either the United States or the continents. You know, so it's kind of an educational...
If you put something like that in the road and somebody gets hit, you're probably liable because you're encouraging them to play in the road.
Right, so I...
You know what I mean? You gotta be careful.
Yeah.
If it's not in a, you can't really do it in a roadway. On a, like a sidewalk, you could, but you're... Once you put it there, that's gonna encourage your kids. If something happens to one of them, it's gonna come back here.
Right, yeah. I don't want the kids on...
That's the only bad thing about...
I don't want them on the roads, even around...
I mean, in the playground.
The playground.
Inside is one thing, or, or the bike path along the, you know, further up or whatever. If it's on the walking path or you're okay, but I don't know if I'd put it in
I agree with you.
any place where there's traffic.
No, I don't want...
Because if something...
If you did Cedar Street, that's where you'd have to put it, wouldn't you?
No, the ones along the sidewalk. There's a sidewalk there.
Yeah, if you've got sidewalk stencils, that's one thing. Because we did asphalt from the sidewalk, we wind the road. But I wouldn't put anything in the road because if it's in the driving lane, basically, you're looking for a lawsuit.
I'm actually trying to draw the kids off of the street because that's where they play, but it's a little dangerous.
Can we put anything in the pavilion, on the floor in the pavilion?
Grass on the floor.
Dirt.
Can you have a floor?
For some reason, I was thinking it was concrete.
Yeah.
I still don't understand why they have concrete there.
So a map on the tarmac.
Not pores.
A map on the tarmac.
Right.
You do make pores, probably.
And maybe the striping for a half for the court.
Yeah.
And then one, one for sidewalks and we'll decide where, which sidewalks.
Okay.
That's my recommendation. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see how, before we spent a ton of money, to see how it's going to hold up.
Yeah.
So the stencils are $2.49 for the big maps, the two maps each, which was a fraction of all the others that were out there. And then the other one for the hopscotch and the basketball were $49.99. Now, Amazon actually had a basketball court, which is identical to the one at, at Peaceful Playground for $30.24 with free shipping. So, you know, it's nominal. You know, and there's other things that we can do that don't necessarily require a stencil to, to make it, you know? I really wanted this, this alphabet snake and I pictured that going up to the library, you know, from the playground in alphabet. But they were all $500 or more and with a place I won't do business with.
So how much was that with this one that you wanted?
Which one?
The alphabet or whatever.
They didn't have the alphabet. The other one was the agility that had the letters in it so that you're going along just doing... The whole combination was $14.99. And I didn't write that down because it was so much more money, but then afterwards I thought, oh, yeah, we have money, I think, still in the playground fund that we could do. So I don't even, I can't even tell you how long it is, but I can send you an email and then we can measure the amount of space and, you know? We can order it.
Kind of just...
What are the stencils made of?
Rubber. Plastic rubber.
That alphabet snake, if I can make one.
Yeah.
Get drawn out.
Well, and really, you literally could and just do the sections of it. I just thought that was so cool. Yeah. For the price that they charge, it's like insanity, but...
So is that enough feedback from the board to pursue with...
Yeah, yeah. So I'll, I'll measure the one that it is and then I'll send you pictures and if you like that, then we'll go ahead with it.
Yeah, good.
Okay. It's just a matter of do you want the United States of America or do you want the world? Like I said, your pictures of both. I'm sure you can picture.
I wanna see pictures.
Okay.
You have to see how much paint, if it's gonna be all different colors.
Well, we're gonna have to get more paint. There's no question about it.
Yeah.
Well, I got the primary color so we can mix and make colors.
You're so creative.
Yes. Anyway, so be fun.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Tom?
Okay, so a report on the water project negotiation. We met with, as a team shortly after our last meeting, which was the following night. And it was, we proposed it. We talked about in regards to the payment schedule, the way I wrote, controlling the water rate, et cetera. And it was, you know, I spent some time digesting it and they were agreeable with it. And they feel that they'll have their meeting tomorrow night. They're quite certain the board is gonna go along with this. So it was very promising that we're nearing an end. We did talk about the writing in a section and the IMA and the lawyers decided they wanted to be separate or not, but I can probably, I think it needs to live as a separate section at least because it would be a separate repayment. Some sort of schedule that we have, we need to come up with and what it can afford and what it will accept for the repayment.
Yeah.
And again, they agreed that was doable.
Great.
So I'm just hoping to hear back. I'm hoping that the next step will be taking what I've started, building a better draft provided for lawyers than I've been working on. You know, we've gotta, we've gotta cut through that old IMA and take a lot of stuff out, which I previously have done, so I just have to relook at it. There's a lot, there's a lot of material in there that doesn't need to be there.
Right, that's right.
Because it was all about going forward with starting the project and so on, and now it's all past tense.
Sounds really promising.
Yeah, I thought, can you agree? I mean, I thought it was very promising. I was very pleasantly surprised. I was just something well and I think we're, I think we're getting close.
That's wonderful, and I thank those of you for your diligence and your persistence and patience.
You're very welcome. So with regards to that, we'll wait until after their meeting tomorrow night and I know they're in finals right now, so I haven't received a reply to my email, but we actually forgot to schedule our next meeting, so we need to schedule it. Need again and keep going forward. I wanted to thank Mike and the crew for the streets. I think they look great. Some of you guys have been sleeping like crazy. How many yards did you pick up? I'm curious.
I don't know. We have a huge pile in Elm Street. It's all off the streets.
Yeah, it's amazing, right?
We use it.
Bring it back up to the...
No, we use it for common till over places like out here. Places like down by the curb I gotta dig.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can have use of common till.
Okay.
We're excited for that instead of trashing it.
Then the other two things I have that I want to report are progress in the sign, but I got pulled out on a field trip today that I wasn't expecting.
You have to go on a field trip?
Yeah. So my day got just pulled away from me and I didn't get... It was on my list to contact Scott and see where he's at, you know? So I can't tell you where, where he's at with the sign.
Okay.
And I have a question in regards to the trail. Actually, when you were talking about it, maybe you remember. The washout areas on that trail, who's, you know? Have we ever decided on how we're gonna repair that? Who's responsible? We talked at one point where I'm gonna tell the county we'll come back and, and take care of it, but...
We are. We signed up on it. We are.
I, that's what I thought. So, I'm sure we don't have time. How do we...
No, our, our...
Not just so much time, but you gotta have equipment to do it. I mean, when you put that stone dust, you gotta put calcium, you can roll it. You know, they use big asphalt rollers. I thought originally it was gonna be paved, but I guess they didn't find the money
Right.
because they were supposed to pave that and then the maintenance, you know, we cut the grass and the side stuff, but... I don't know. We'll do whatever we gotta do, I mean...
We'll just figure out a way to do what we have to do.
We'll fill it or whatever, but it may not stay.
No, I know. It's, it's, it's an area...
They put calcium usually. That's what's hard to say, you know? They roll it. They use stone dust and they roll it, which you need to compaction it. Usually they put calcium and that's what bonds. I know there's a small spot. Somebody said by the bridge, there was a small spot inside.
Well, the spot when you go, it's like behind...
By Cherry Street.
By Cherry, Cherry Street.
Yeah, it's like right behind it, behind Cherry Street, exactly. And it's really washed out down that hill. And, I don't know. I was looking at it as a safety hazard. It's like if somebody's going through there with a bicycle and doesn't see it.
Well, we'll go up, we'll go up to fill it or... Get some barrels or cones on it for now and see if we can go and fill it.
Okay. Okay, should we contact the county to see if there's any plan on continuing towards trying to finish?
I'm quite sure there is not. I mean, I, I can ask. I don't mind asking. I can give Harry a call.
Yeah.
But my understanding was that they, the money, they're out of money for that.
You're draining the pot?
I think so.
Okay.
I certainly can ask.
Okay. Well, my concern is somebody getting hurt. You know, because it's pretty deep.
Is that deep?
Yeah, it's probably like, you know, somewhere tens of the so.
It's off to one side, though.
It is, it is.
It's, you know, it's not the entire trail.
We'll get something there.
I mean, when I walk it, I just walk on the other side.
Yes, it's just all on one side.
Yeah, when you see those kids go racing around there on their bikes, they're not paying attention.
No, but they're not on the...
I'll see if I can get ahold of Carl and see what they use for...
Up the sidewalks or the streets or, yeah, I know he's...
The dust in there. Try to get the same.
Okay.
Because I know last time we got it with different color. You can see on this end, it looks like it's wet all the time. It's a different color stone, but I'll see what he put on there. I don't know if it's stone dust or what he put. I'll see if, I'll find out in Carl and see what they originally put and where they got it from. Each color is different. I mean, I guess it doesn't matter. It's, it looks like a stone, but...
No, it doesn't. It's almost insane because it's all the same stuff. It's just unfortunate. It will wash out again.
It's gonna keep getting worse.
What if we look at in those sections that keep washing out, up paving it and looking for funding for that? Can we get a quote on that for those two areas that really wipe out? Wash out, wipe out?
Sounds like it.
I don't really know. Is there any kind of trenching that could be done to draw the water off the trail?
Well, we have to do that, first of all.
Yeah, you...
I'm thinking we could do that.
They should have put, oh, it's in...
Yes.
Ahead of time if, if it was bad areas, but you tear it out, you're gonna, I don't know. See, I don't, I don't know how it's gonna work. You'll have to find private contractors probably because like our paving, the county does and they don't have time to do that. They're not gonna do...
Right.
You gotta have a small machine to get in there.
Yeah, you have to have like a driveway machine.
A driveway machine. You're, you're 100% right. It's something to look into to move towards because we're gonna, if you go up there and spend a day or more trying to repair it, it's gonna happen again.
Right, then we just keep paying money to put that gravel down and it just keeps washing away. It's like... Yeah.
Okay, I'll make some calls.
Well, I will talk to, I'll talk to the county about, I'll talk to Harry about the paving, if there's, it's in the plans at all.
Right, it's a, it's a good place to start, and then we'll see what the plan is.
Well, it's originally what it was sold as, would be totally paved.
Right, right, yeah.
The whole thing was, yeah.
Anything else, Tom?
Nope, that's all I have, thank you.
Um, I met with a few, um, community members about having a summer, summer camp being offered for kids this summer to do arts and crafts, uh, physical activities. And science activities, um, so we decided to do Monday and Wednesdays from July fifteenth through August fourteenth. There's ten sessions, um, for, from eleven to twelve thirty, um, and we'll do four different types of activities. And it'll geared towards all ages, so we'll have things for the younger kids and for the older kids, and it'll be held at Playground. We have a Facebook event for this called Summer Camp, so anyone can respond to that and share it. Or if there's any questions, you can contact me by email, um, at nickymelinsky@yahoo.com. We have on June twenty-eighth, the longest day in play, which is one to three, and that's at Playground also, and this is our third.
Fourth.
Year, fourth year. Uh, it's a countywide event, so many areas are doing some kind of event for that day. You can find more information on that from the Glen County Pub Department website. Um, and we'll have like long games, popscotch, foursquare, and obstacle course and a few other little fun things to do. I did contact also a dance studio instructor who is more than happy to come for an hour and show a few little dance moves to the kids, so we'll have that also. As part of the day, um, and June twenty-third is our first fun run, it's Sunday at five o'clock on River Street, and that's for ages up to sixteen. Kids just get out and race the road. And, uh, we'll have five of those this summer, so three, I don't know if we decided on three or four. They earn a T-shirt at the end. Um, so it's.
I think it's, it's more.
Four, okay, four out of five, and that's every other Sunday at five o'clock.
What time?
Five, yeah.
That's probably the fourth year we're doing that too.
Yeah, maybe so, yeah.
And, that's it for now?
That's it?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Kim?
The only thing I have is, I see I had a copy of the, um, Doc Doctors, I have not heard anything on that grant yet. They said it would be sometime June or July, and I just, I have not had time lately to.
Don't, don't worry about it, I should reach out to you.
Well, she said, she said she won't even be copied on the email, it'll come directly to me.
Okay.
So, and I haven't seen anything, so I'm thinking, we're already the tenth of June. If it's not this month, I would think it's gonna be the beginning part of next month, so, um, hopefully we're trying to hear something. And that's really all I have.
We have the bag launch grant on, um, as old business, but do you mind discussing that now as long as Kim just brought that up? Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Why don't we just talk about that now rather than come back to it? I think we all agree that we would really, we would really like this, this launch system. One idea is that, um, we go ahead and purchase one and put it, I haven't talked to Mike about this, so actually, you'd have to. Work this out with me because I don't know how, how it would fit, but let's assume it will, um, and put it at the boat launch. And just purchase one and have it at the launch, and then if we get the grant, get it at the new launch site that's in the revitalization study plan. Down by the Playground. And the reason I mention that is I just think that so many people have asked me if we can't, if we can't get this so that they can get out on the river. It's very difficult to get into kayaks with any kind of hip issues or other mobility issues, they're not, it's not that expensive. Juanita said that she thought we could find money to pay for that fairly easily. Um, it's just an idea, it's up to the board, but we could order it and proceed with it after I talk to Mike about if it, that will fit. So, I'm not putting you on the spot right now.
No, I'll have to.
We'd have to go and, and look at the, the layout of the land and.
No matter, we'll, we'll shave it to what we need, I mean, we'll make it, we'll make it work.
Is it removable, it's supposed to be moved out every summer?
Yeah, it, it would be moved out, yeah.
So, yeah, if we put it in for now, then it's summer, move it.
Yeah, um. Otherwise, I think we're gonna wait for this grant, which we may or may not get, of course. If we get it, it's so late that we can't really use it this season, if we don't get it, we just don't have it again for another year.
Well, and they're paying for the rails, right, the one grant that said no to us? Or is that only if we get the other grant?
She, what Sierra said was that there is money left in that other grant. Um, and that they would, they'd find a way to fund it.
Okay.
So those rails could apply to this self-purchase one if we decide to do this, I would assume.
Well, yeah, you really can't do this without the rails, that's the whole point.
Well, I mean, we, yeah, I was thinking that that grant would probably pay for the rails. I don't think they care whether or not we get it through our funds or through a grant. We're still adding something to the commu-, to the community.
Oh, no, I'm sure they wouldn't care, I don't know though, on purchasing something in advance and then being reimbursed in a grant.
Yeah, see, that, that was my only concern, and I wanted to try to contact Sierra again to get.
I think so, I don't. I don't think it is, we don't have a good feeling about that.
To get clarification on that, and I just, I just haven't had time.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that we buy the rails and then say, oh, by the way, we did this, can we have the money?
Right, no, but if we go ahead and purchase it and then that other grant comes through, I don't know if you, you, you can't normally use grant money to reimburse for something you purchased.
I'm saying we clear that first. I'm not suggesting that.
We're just testing the two of them.
We're gonna end up with two.
We end up with two.
If we get the grant.
One at the boat launch and one by the Playground at the new launch site.
Okay.
Do we need two?
Do we need two?
Yeah.
I mean, so wait another month for a decision?
It's, this, this is just a suggestion, because there are people who.
Yeah. I'd love to get it, and it's, a lot of people talk.
There are people who go to the boat launch and can't get in kayaks.
Yep. Yep.
But there are people who are at the Playground and were trying to build this center down there that would perhaps launch from there. That will not be accessible all season, the water's going to be too low.
But it's totally up to the board, if you wanna wait and hear about the grant, I'm total, I'm, I'm with you.
I, I would lean towards that and, and purchasing one of our own funds, and then having two if we don't really have a need for two. I guess is where I'm going, and if you're, if you're worried about the water being low at that site, why would we put it there then?
Well, it's part of the revitalization effort to build up the downtown area, to bring people in and then have them recreate bikes, boats. The Playground, hopefully get some small shops down there, and it just concentrates people there. But right now, all we have is the boat launch, and that's where people are using their kayaks, and that's where it would be used at this point. But if you feel like you'd rather not spend that money and you wanna wait, I, it's your decision, it was just a thought. I'm worried about, I don't, I'm worried that we won't get it and we'll have another year of waiting for it.
Well, if we, if we think we'll have an answer. Yeah, or any month, let's say, within a month, we should, still should have time to purchase one of them.
I thought the AARP one was August announcement. Cause.
I didn't, I.
Because you talked.
Well, I don't wanna start searching for it because that takes forever, you know.
Yeah. You talked about tying it into the Village Fest.
That was to do the, um, like the celebration of it and having, having the, helping.
Ribbon cutting.
Yeah, the ribbon cutting, thank you, um, and tying it in with the Village Fest, which is what, the first weekend in August. Because that, we thought we'd have time to, to get the acknowledgement, whether we got it or didn't get it, and then decide what we wanted to do at that point. I do not know what the lead time is on ordering this. I can, I can try to call them tomorrow and find out what the lead time is.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, it's probably a couple of weeks.
I, I would think that they've got these things pretty well.
I think there's.
I, I would think they're like a.
A deal or in Vermont.
I believe that's where these guys are from.
Yeah. Okay, I thought the AARP grant was in August, so I might be mistaken on that.
I think you're right, actually.
Because in, in August, there's no reason to put it in.
Well, yeah, because you still can do your kayaking and canoeing through the fall.
Where's that?
That's, that's my point, so why would you put it there, why not put it where the water's deeper? Where you can use it for a longer season.
We may, you know, we may end up doing that.
Yeah.
But, but we don't have, I don't think we have to decide that totally right now. I mean, I'd like to have that secondary launch site, I think that would be nice, but maybe it's not a good location. Well, we don't have to discuss this any further, but, so it sounds like you prefer to just wait and see if we get the grant.
Maybe till, at least till, till next month's meeting.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can get some more information from Sierra.
Okay.
Or try to, go back and find when that is supposed to be awarded, but I thought it was supposed to be before August.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Thanks for all your work on this. Anything else? Uh, report from the clerk treasurer?
Um, everyone has their expense revenue reports for May, which is our year end. We ended the year end with our general fund having fifty thousand, water forty thousand, and our sewer had sixty-nine hundred.
Hmm, that's a good budget.
Wasn't that?
That's a, that's a rollover for the year.
Fifty in general, forty in water, or fifty in water?
Forty in water and sixty-nine in sewer. The general being fifty because we didn't do any paving, not sure what our paving's gonna cost next year. I'd probably suggest not rolling anything into a reserve in general. Water, we do have forty, if we wanna do, um, half of that or even thirty thousand and F eighty, eight forty-five, which is reserved for inventory. We talked about the nano filters that down the road might have to purchase. That's your dis, that's what I would suggest.
Even those are way down the road.
Hopefully.
God willing.
Well. Nothing stupid happens, yes.
Right, but if you pinpoint it for that, then you have to use it for that.
Yeah, but it's, it's reserved for inventory.
Plus, I think those were, the price tag was around sixty thousand, so even though we may be eight years away, if we put a little bit away over the years, we should have it, that would be.
Don't, don't forget to all these meters we're replacing, probably eighteen, eighteen years.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
That's another, that's another inventory, so.
Twenty year, twenty year battery out, they gotta be swapped, so that's something we need to look at.
Yeah.
You know, if you.
Just a little bit at a time, so it doesn't all come at once.
If we put some away this year, and then next year, we're talking about the water replacement, next year we might not be able to, you know, it's just.
I'd recommend that we put some away.
Mm-hmm, I agree. I think thirty's a good number, I think that's, that's a start.
How do the rest of you feel?
I, I agree.
Make motion to move thirty thousand from the water fund into, uh, reserved for parts.
Inventory.
Inventory.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I don't know what's gonna happen, we need for inventory, but. We could have a little bit of stretching, it's looking out there too.
Right.
For, for, for repairs of brakes, yeah, definitely.
Don't, don't mention it. All right, so there's a motion, that's a roll call?
Trustee Trombley. Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Anything else, Juanita on the, the report?
No, that's just, I, 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 somebody at Ellis End has any other questions on there, but I think we did pretty decent for the year.
I think it was really good planning. Presentation of warrant payment.
Okay, first of all, we, we have to do a transfer because we have those other bills for, um, for blowers. So we need to do a transfer from G two thirty cash reserves to G fourteen forty point one, twenty-nine thousand fifty-two dollars.
Make motion to do that transfer?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is our, this was our fourth and our fifth payment, so this is the end of it.
Yeah, who is right. Check.
Twenty-nine thousand fifty-two dollars.
And is that a roll call too?
Yep. Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
The warrant payment.
Um, we have additional invoices, I don't know, thirty-seven thousand zero zero nine eight nine for a total warrant of forty thousand seven sixty-two ninety-five. Oh, no, never mind, additional invoices are three thousand seven fifty-three oh six, I have it the opposite way. Anyway, but the total warrant is forty thousand seven sixty-two ninety-five.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the warrant, forty thousand seven sixty-two ninety-five.
A second?
Second.
Other discussion?
The slight chemical that was the year end. Stopped up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we didn't get the bill till today.
Is there no other questions, roll call?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Report from the superintendent.
I didn't do a, I didn't get chance to do a report, um. We've, uh, street pretty busy, street cleaning is, uh, is done, we're into ditching and, uh, getting ready for asphalt, clean up. Culvert installations, um, I still don't have a date yet when asphalt's gonna happen here, um. They're unsure, they have a bunch of culvert stuff to do too, so. He was thinking more towards closer to fall, September, October, um, but I don't know, I'm not sure. So, but I'm gonna just, gonna keep going on it because if he does come early, we're not ready.
That's right.
So, we're gonna do what we can to, uh, I still haven't finished my, uh, hydro flushing procedure, I gotta get that finished, we still gotta flush hydrants, that's gonna be a. I'm guessing at least a three week process, probably. Hydro testing, uh, full testing and flushing, so, um, gotta get going on that. It should've been done already, but we just got street cleaned, I think it was last week we finished up, but the weather hasn't been. For that, wasn't too good, now it's nice, but, so we're just gonna keep going on, uh, and go what we gotta do to, to stay afloat. We did get a few, I don't know if you guys know, we got a few trees, we got six red oaks.
Mm-hmm.
Those are all planted, um, but other than that, we're just, uh, trying to get what we can done for, well, summer's here because. Couple months from now, we're gonna be heading the other way. I just look at the calendar, I say, oh my gosh, it's getting colder. I do have, I gave you guys a sheet too, just so you have it to look at.
Slap them, it just started.
That's a slip file?
That's not, that's not catatonic, that's just box, plow, wing, and it's a sander built in the box. But on the backside is what the, the cost, that, that's no truck, that's just bolt atoms. I'm gonna, I gotta get it, I got a whole piece of equipment too that's gonna go, um, I just ordered pins for the Peterbilt. The pins, I'm hoping it's just pins, but our, uh, our, our dump cylinder's leaking, so. I just pressed a new dump cylinder, I'm gonna call, he was actually supposed to send me tonight the serial number or, uh, make and model so I can find out what's gonna cost to rebuild it, but, uh. They think most of the time it's cheaper to buy a new cylinder than it's better rebuilt, but I know the cylinder's like, I don't know, twenty-six hundred, twenty-seven hundred, I think that's where it was, something like that. Plus, they, they're bringing somebody to pull the box off, um. in our backhoe, my, uh, extended hole cylinder's leaking inside the boom, so the boom has to be taken apart.
That must be covered under warranty?
No, that's been gone for, that's a twenty-fourteen, that's been gone for a couple years warranty.
I thought we did extend them on that.
We did, but it's, we're five years old now, thirty-five days old.
Mm-hmm.
It's a fourteen. So, um, I'm gonna make a few calls, I'm gonna see maybe about, maybe Drago's, their case dealer, maybe, 'cause if they gotta take it, we gotta haul it to Colchester, either hire a, five hundred bucks probably, hire a truck or trailer, and then they're gonna bring it back after, or we gotta have them come here and try to do it in the yard, I don't know, but I was gonna see what if, if they can give me some kind of idea, quote, I mean, it's gotta be fixed, but give me some kind of, I mean, it could be a sixty cent O ring on the, on the end of the fitting, I don't know, but it's inside the telescopic boom, I mean, you gotta take that whole boom apart.
Right.
I don't know if we can do that here.
No.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call and see, try to get some kind of idea, and either see what they charge to come get it, and if not, I'll drive it to Morse. But it's, we're getting into our busy season with the ditching and everything, so I can't be down. But it's leaking inside, if I lift it all the way up, it, it leaks for a while, then it dumps out, you know, so. We added some today, but. Yeah, so we're five years old already. Goodbye. I'm already looking at that. It went up a lot.
It went up a lot?
Yeah, it went up about, uh, uh, almost thirty thousand last year, compared what we paid for ours. Yep, it's a racist point, but I renew it, and just looking at what they were paying, it's almost thirty thousand dollars more, went up a lot.
Well, it's probably gonna be one of our next items on the list, you're recording, but not this year.
Plow truck, probably, and I was actually talking to him about that too, um, if we go ahead and order a plow truck, we probably won't do it by like, should do it by probably August or September this year. We won't have it for next plow season, it'll be the following plow season, because they're over a year out. So you're gonna have, you're gonna have this budget year, next budget year, before. They're that far out. I was just talking to him, I said, so save a lot of the truck for, not this winter, next winter, he said, you probably need to order it by this, like, August.
August, okay.
To have it for two years from now. Yeah, because it's over a year, because they, whatever it takes for the, to get the truck, and then they gotta have it for so many months, 'cause they gotta build, put the box on, build it for your plummet, put all the brackets, do it for whatever the vehicle is to make, and there's only one, you know, it's, they all, it doesn't matter which make truck, it all goes to the same place.
Okay, so, uh, I guess, easy as quotes for next meeting?
Yeah, well, about next meeting, maybe the meeting after that, so, I, I guess, I, I figured by the time, even if we start getting quotes, you figure it's gonna be, you're gonna have at least a couple months tied up, because you're gonna get them, you're gonna come to the meeting, we're gonna decide, it's gonna, we're gonna have to change, you know what I mean, so you're gonna, you got two months.
Yeah, but you're gonna start getting quotes in order to start the process.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Mike?
I'm gonna, see what I can do, yeah.
I mean, uh, we really need to make that decision in August.
I mean, 'cause you're looking at two year, I mean, two winters before.
I know, I, I don't want it to be three, though.
No, I know. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have to, we'll look at what they got, what the options are, and try to get some, we'll try to change things maybe a little bit, compared to when we had, maybe smaller rubber, um, try to get it where it's.
Well, like I suggested with the body, is, you got lower sides, tailgate?
Yeah, they, yeah, that's, that's gonna be standard. Twenty, uh, twenty-seven inch sides, thirty-nine inch gate, that's the biggest you can get for that style, it's gonna build in sander, so they, it's, it's an embed sander.
Mm-hmm, so that's already gonna put you lower in this one?
Correct.
Yeah.
But your headboard's not, you gotta, you gotta lower the, the cat in the tractor. If you don't lower the tractor, your headboard's still the same life, 'cause this one they had to take the foot off. I wasn't here then, but they said when they got here, went through the garage, really, if we can get away with not doing that after, 'cause that's where you have your problems, that, the, the Peterbilt, the top's rotten right out of it, because it's been caught in, if you can get it done before from factory, you just, you know what I mean? So they crowd everything, they, they put different canopies and stuff on them now too, that, to try to bring them, they mount them on the outside instead of on top, to try to lower it, but I know that's one of the things that, when they came up and looked at our truck, they think that they can put smaller rubber on the tube, shorter, to try to, the cat height, they can get the cat height down, and they're gonna get the headboard height down, so, we'll, we'll have to see as it gets closer here, and see what options are available, basically.
Maybe you can bring.
Some models are, sorry, some models are probably gonna be lower, you know, Pete's got a pretty tall cab.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could, if they didn't have to modify it.
Mm-hmm, so we'll, we'll have to compare them, really, the different models, overall height like that.
This one is tall, I mean.
Yeah.
And it's, and the pins are worn out in this, I can lift the box right up, I can tip the box like this in that truck. It's not from dumping, it's from that sander, it's all top heavy, constantly rocking. So I just ordered two new pins, I'm hoping if I put new, two new pins, it's gonna square that up, because that's what happens, the box, they're so warped, when it comes down, it, it pushes on the cylinder, the box, it's gotta re-center itself. So I'm hoping that we don't have to change the weld on brackets for the pivot hinge. I'm gonna try new pins first, 'cause either way, we're gonna need them, and if that squares the box up, then we can, next month I'll, I'll have whatever it costs for a cylinder, 'cause we're gonna have to get it, we're gonna have to get it fixed, can't let it leak oil. It's leaking up inside the col, in, in the tunnel.
Okay.
So, but if it opens up in the cylinder, if it's not chewed up, and it's, it's gonna cause the same problem. So I wanna start with the, the order of the pins, fifty-seven bucks, so give me the pins, we'll put them in, and then let's see if that takes care of it. When we lift that up, when I first started it, there was a pin missing in that truck, we put a new one in, well, only one side was changed, I'm hoping that it's worn more on one side, and that's why it's shifting, but we'll see once we change it, 'cause if that cylinder has, we're gonna get to take the box and everything off, so it's not, I mean, you're probably gonna take double with the cylinder prices and labor.
Oh, God, yeah.
So you're probably looking at ten grand by the time you're done, I mean. Um, but we'll see, let me get the pins first, and we'll have to change it and go that, go that route and see, so.
Okay.
So there will be a little bit of expense coming up here for equipment, but it's, you gotta do it, I mean, you can't leave it.
Nope, I can't, and I agree with Janet, I know you have a lot of time, but if you get some quotes going forward.
I'll see what, I'll have to go meet with him and see what he can, uh, you know, like we had, but maybe some a little bit lower. The box is gonna be smaller, um, our old box was forty-four inches high, forty-eight to the top of the gate, this one's, uh, what did I say, thirty-seven, nine, twenty-seven, nine?
I think it was thirty-seven, twenty-seven side, right?
Yeah, thirty, uh, thirty-nine inch gate, and thirty, I don't remember, but it's, uh, six point one one yards, water level, which the other one's more than that, um, he believes it'll be about the same as our old sander, he, he figures about six yard. So, um, well, even with the lower sides, you figure it'll be about the same, which, and it will make it easier for us to load.
Yep.
And the nice thing is, this one here's got the sander and the bo, chain in the bottom, like, everybody's switched to it now, all of, it's the same thing as all the town, you know, all the towns, except they got a fourteen foot box, it's a ten foot box, but you're sanding in front of your wheels, so you have traction. There is a material issue, it wa, that comes with it, you can use to like, shoulder roll to it, you can use it like right before. There's a few things that, uh, power up, power down the cylinder, because we had trouble with this one. And that has cylinders inside, so as you, your sander gets unloaded, you, you have the box tips up to put your sand back, which this one also can be dumped, instead of, if we're gonna break a chain, we're gonna wash it out with a fire hose, there's no way to get in it. This one can be dumped if we need it to, a break or whatever, we can dump the sand out, flip the plate down, you know, five minutes you flip the plate down, use it for a truck, come back, and your sander's already built in, so you don't have to move none more, that's a big time consuming.
Well, it is, it is.
Even if, even to clean it, you know, every so often, we can dump it and desalt it, where the other one, when it went in in the fall, it didn't help the spring, so that whole, the salt's eating it. All the time.
Yep, well, it's a much better system, I've seen them, kind of clean, um, some weeks ago.
I'll see what I can have them start on, uh, I already discussed it with them, but I'll see what we can dig up for pricing, we need to get, at least get started.
We need to get started, right.
Yeah, I talked to him tonight, he said it should be by, you know, this.
Well, I would like to do that by August.
Well, it's true for that. Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I can't believe how long it takes now.
Yeah, it doesn't matter which, because, and they all go to, I mean, these guys are the plows for, sanders for basically everybody, so, even if they got five, that they're, even though the other truck companies are catching up, they're not, because they still have that many coming. You know, they got it happening for, I think, at least around two months.
Okay.
So.
And, and the other thing I want to share with the board is, I asked Mike if he could project, project out of, say, a one to five year plan of equipment replacement, we're talking about other things that are going to wear out, and, and, uh, whether or not there's any resale value, like, we talked about the mower, we've talked about the other things, so. I'd like to have a, a bigger financial picture of what's coming up, and how we are to save for it, to plan for it. So we'll keep you posted on that, but I think that's the way to go.
Oh, definitely, we have to plan for it, and, yeah, you're right, I mean, yeah, now we're talking about the backhoe, out of warranty already.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else, Mike? What'd you say, Amy?
Just think about our own warranty.
I figured I'd have a warranty for a while.
Thank you. Uh, correspondence?
Correspondence from code, codes officer, take note to Patricia LeVard regarding property maintenance, mortgage tax distribution from Clinton County Treasurer, correspondence from Charles Wood Foundation regarding grant for music in the park, appearance ticket to Sean Moynihan, appearance ticket to Sean Moynihan, notice of violation to Courtney Moynihan, JCEO monthly report, and a quarterly franchise fee from Charter Communications.
Any questions, comments on correspondence? New business, I put together, um, a packet of several fund balance policies that exist around the country, they're all quite similar. What I would like to do is take, if two of you would be willing to volunteer to kind of put this together and come back, everyone should read all of them, but if two of you could get together and work on some recommendations for us, this is a required policy that we don't have right now, um, I would like to get it in place in the next couple of months. So I don't know if I've got any volunteers, you will find these policies very, very similar, in fact, some of the wording is identical.
Cause they probably share from each other.
They do, and we're going to do that too, but I wanna make sure that we don't leave anything out that the Village of Champlain needs to have included. So, would a couple of you be willing?
Do it.
Thank you, Amy, would someone work with Amy, please? Kim, thanks, and I'll let you two decide, you know, how, when you can get together, and then bring it back, but I would ask that everyone really read over them and see, um, and then we should be able to get this put together fairly easily. Old business, uh, blowers at the wastewater treatment plant are in and operating, yes?
Yep.
All right. The contamination cleanup, I'm sure that you saw the big, uh, big holes in the pavement out in front, um, Mike actually can fill us in on that, I think better you did get them to agree with you that the little building needed to be further in the back.
Yep.
And I, is that the next stage? I know paving is the last.
They gotta do, they gotta do suction tests and see if it's even gonna work, know what they need for a blower, they gotta do a bunch of tests for vacuum, and then, once they decide that, they're gonna pipe, they got the pipes to the side of the building, they're running them down the outside of the building to the back, and putting the blower by the back door.
In that corner?
Between the door and the edge of the building, they're gonna put a platform, I think they're gonna put a drum underneath it, and then the blower on top of it. It's got a knockout pot, you gotta empty. They're gonna put a stack on it, it's gonna blow right there.
How noisy is that gonna be?
I don't know. They wanted to put it in the driveway, I said, no, they wanted to put it in the driveway. Can't have it in the driveway, right, if you got a ten foot right away, it takes, how are you gonna get the, I mean, snow comes off the building, you can't plow. I, 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 I think we're gonna, I don't think this is over, this is gonna be a disaster, this is all clean stone, all the way to the bottom fifteen feet deep. You know, you know what the water's gonna do in here, that's, and it keeps settling, I mean, they filled the trench with a hand and plate paper, that's not, supposedly, you're supposed to come out and take out a couple feet and put, right before, maybe? The reason, then they weren't sure, then they were gonna put a concrete, you know, spots, I, 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 right now, I'm not sure what they're doing.
I don't think they know what they're doing.
No, it keeps changing, so far, this is like two hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, they are gonna asphalt after it's all done, and just up to where they stopped, and up to the edge of the building to the front piece.
When the asphalt is in place, do you still think we're gonna have groundwater issue with this?
I think so, but, uh, there's, there's drainage to put in the basement, so your asphalt won't be doing anymore, if, if, when they dug out here, it was, they were hitting water, and these vacuum pipes can't pick up water, so you may end up seeing later pumping system with an oil-water separator and charcoal filters, and they've seen them before, I mean, they hit water when they were digging out here. I don't know, you've got, right here by the building, you still got the old culvert pipes and then stacks in there, and that was all stone, so now that's stone all the way to the edge of the building, I don't know what's gonna happen, but you take that co, stone, the water can work up and down in that stone, where the clay in between, it can't, so, um, I don't know, it'll be interesting, but I think right where the cutouts are is right where the cars park, so you're gonna be parked there, and that's, in a hot summer, in the pavement, in the hot sun, I think you're gonna end up with dip trenches that resettle. I don't think it'll go away.
It's intense.
I think it's gonna be constant. Right now, I don't know where they're at, to be honest with you.
I think they're in the engineering part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're supposed to come up and, they were supposed to come up the next day or whatever, and put a sump next door in their basement, but they haven't did that yet, and they're stacking stuff that they got here. So, they're still in the decision making, and they're just, guys come here and do what they are told to do, and, I wanted a dimension to that blower before I, you know, I didn't wanna put it outside the building, but I guess.
No, and I'm also concerned about noise for, you know, nearby house.
Well, if they put it here, it's right by the bedroom.
Exactly.
So at least now it's on the back.
Is it gonna be stacked highs, so maybe you can get rid of some of the noise?
I don't know how high, I mean, you gotta have, you can only go so high, you gotta light layers, so you're only gonna have whatever they can put. He's getting a smelling set from this one, so they may have to take the T out the top, stop it going this way, and just let it go straight up. When the wind blows just right, course like a funnel, you know, between the buildings, so.
He did say we could turn it off and on.
Yeah.
Because I'm worried about the electrical costs.
Well, that too.
Well, the first year, we always gotta run steady. To be honest, since we've had that radon fan and the drainage in here, I don't think it's.
It's much better.
Yeah.
It's a gazillion percent better.
Oh, yeah.
The spring, we had all the rain, I mean, usually you can't send it, and I think that might have did it, but.
Well, we'll keep you posted.
It's their design, I'm just worried about now, like, you know, they got clay, they got clay, that's supposed to be a vacuum break between them, and they're supposed to have valves we adjust to, to break the vacuum, and depending which trench, which one's drawing more or less, we got, we gotta, there's gonna be a, a vacuum gauge on there, and we gotta adjust that, but there's gonna be knockout pots empty, and, you know, I said, where does that go? If that's vapor, the vapor went in here, is it just water, condensate, I mean, I don't, so there's supposed to be a whole big operation manual, and the, I don't know, I, I really don't know that much about it yet, because they haven't brought me everything yet, so it's gonna learn, I guess, as they come in.
Well, it sounds like they're still building that plan.
Yes, you are exactly right.
Yeah.
They don't have that.
Because originally, they didn't know, you know, if they were gonna put the blowers out back, you'd have to upsize them, you have to run power way out, but then, you're increasing the size of your blower, so what's that gonna do with your electricity here? So, if we can keep it closer, so we're gonna put it against, between the garage door and the end of the building. Yeah, I'm not sure, I think he'd see tone, like, go ahead with the plan, and they went ahead with the plan, and I don't know if it's, the whole plan's completed, so, but I know he did specify, it's like.
Maybe it's broke loose and the cart went, and the horses are going. Maybe it just broke loose in the cart when, when the horses are going the other.
I think he said it like a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand already, I think, so.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, they were hauling it by the dump truck to the landfill. I think it was taking, well, for the first day, I think it was like an hour and forty-five minutes. They had three trucks lined up at a time, and I think after that, it was like two or three hours sometimes.
They were going more than that?
Yeah. It was cheap, it was quicker for my entire haul line sludge from the Trout River to Franklin County. I could haul a load in the morning. He was back here in northernous way with his second truck and trailer at eleven o'clock. You know, they were turning around, but it's hard to deal with Clinton County. Paperwork and they hold you up and anyway.
I explained.
Wait for trucks. So, I, you don't know anymore now than you did before she asked me to, to do it, so.
Well, but let's just say that we do have some concerns.
But I do have a few, yeah.
As they do, I believe.
I mean, we did have to move, move that to the back, which I think is better. I just don't know what's gonna happen here in the front of all the, with the stone. Probably due to the gas line got broke here too. That was fixed.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, the trench, cause that was.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mention that.
We had Monday off, Tuesday, a power line got hit by a truck, broke the pole. We still got no power to the tank. And Thursday, the gas line got roped here. The trench collapsed and it, when the big asphalt strip between, and it fell and it cut the line right off, so. What was I saying?
It was a great, interesting week, yes.
Yeah, it really killed what we had planned. It just, it just puts it lost everything.
You just never know.
So, this is what it is. Nobody was hurt. That's the main thing.
Yeah, that's right.
You know?
Uh, we already discussed number three, water project negotiations. Um, a little update on the LED light, uh, streetlight conversion. Um, more people, more municipalities have joined, so the cost is going to go down slightly. Um, NISIC has been contacted. We have contacted NISIC. We're ready to sign a contract. But before that, um, a company called Wendell is going to come, um, do street mapping beginning this month on our lights. So, that is moving forward.
Good.
Um, water line replacement. This is a long, complicated topic. Let me just say that Candace Valmer and Matt Cooper and I are discussing the best way to go forward. Um, the, um, estimated cost for all of the lines that we had considered was nine hundred and fifty thousand. The CDBG grant is for seven hundred and fifty thousand. That leaves two hundred thousand that would have to come from another source, like a loan. Then there's a question of who is responsible for paying that because we were taking our income survey information off of just the people on those streets of those lines. And there's talk about whether or not those people alone would be responsible for paying that debt because they would be the beneficiaries. That's not going to happen. I'm not going to ask the
No.
least able people in the village to pay the expense. Um, so, we're in the middle of that. I have a conference call on Thursday, um, so we'll see. Mike and I also talked about reducing the size of the replacement to just Main Street and Cedar and
Short.
A little bit on Elm.
And a short piece by, from the mill to that valve, hoping that would get rid of our AC.
Yeah, and that, um, of course, that reduces it greatly, but.
Cut it about in half.
It was about in half. But there's still the question of whether or not we'll even qualify for this grant. So, sorry to leave you all up in the air, but that's exactly where it is right now.
No answers.
No answers. I have no answers, but lots of phone calls. Um, the UV de, decontamination system. Um, I know Matt is working on that. He told me that today on, on the, the first part of that. Um, for the camera, security cameras, some are working and I believe some still are not.
No, they're all, they're all working.
Didn't you have to redo something that you didn't have?
I was gonna add, I'm gonna add one at the water plant.
That's what I was thinking.
You gotta bring the wire, and when he, when he brings in the camera, we're gonna swap the one over. You can switch the antennas and move it, but they're all working.
Okay, all right.
And they haven't been working since he came in last night.
Great. Uh, paving dates, you just said you have no idea. Hydro flushing, you said that that will be done, but it's very complicated. You don't even wanna know how complicated this is. It's tough. Mike tried to explain it to me and it was incredibly complicated. And we talked about the kayak, kayak launch ground. That's all I have. Anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everyone.
Kim says.
Not naturally, but we.